I'm going to give the microphone to you, Dr. Bosse, to introduce our first presenters. Oh, actually, first resident's remarks. So, given that it's a board work session, we will start with our first resident remarks. The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comment should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Anybody for our first resident remarks? Seeing none, I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Bosse, to make introductions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reed. Here's a block line.
So tonight, we're gonna have... We have Johnson Controls here to go over what their contract is looking at for the energy performance contract. If you recall, back in September, they were the successful RFP for this process. And we've been working closely with the team, John McDonald, myself, as well as Fred from BBS, to come up with a plan action for this. So, we have Karen Moran here and Dan Haffel. They're the executives on the account. And we also have Rob Rolston in the back there, who is the project manager for it. So, I'll turn it over to you guys to go ahead and go quickly through the energy performance contract.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Kerry Lockman and John McDonald and their entire staff for the last several months helping us to put together this project to really dovetail very well with your bond project. So, those meetings were very important to us and extremely helpful to us. And so, we thank them for their efforts. They gave a lot of their time and attention to us. So, thank you. Go ahead, Dan. We'll go to the next slide. Project overview. Okay, so, as many of you know, an energy performance contract is able to pay for itself over an 18-year term. It is done through the utility bills and therefore is not an impact upon your taxes for the community. So, many districts on Long Island, like yourselves, take advantage of this because it's a great way for districts to do capital improvements without raising taxes. So, that is, I guess I'll say, the beauty of energy performance contracts. We have developed a project that is approximately $8.1 million. It generates about $426,000 annually in energy savings. There are 16 energy conservation measures that we've developed. We're gonna go through a couple of those this evening to give you a highlight overview. And meets the payback criteria of 18 years, which is important, and has a 100% savings guarantee. So, all of the savings that we talked about this evening are guaranteed to the district in writing. Your council, Ingraham Smith, has done many contracts with us and other districts. And these are guaranteed savings. That, this is a map of Long Island with other school districts in and around you that we have done and are doing projects with. So, I think your closest one right now is...
You can read all of them, right?
Yeah, sure. Your closest is Northport. We're just wrapping that project up now. We went through the introduction to the Johnson team, the measures. We'll start with lighting. One of the large drivers of energy savings on this project is the lighting, where we're gonna go from a T8 incandescent project to LED. So, you know, it's gonna drive $113,000 in annual energy savings. And one of the things that we incorporated through our discussions with the district was bringing in new kitchen ceilings at all the buildings. So, in addition, we're gonna have new lights in those kitchens. And that was, I think, identified as part of the bond work, which we're now gonna be able to cover under the energy performance contract. So, a nice add to the project. We also, in addition to the inside lights, we're gonna tackle the exterior lighting, also going to an LED technology. Better lighting, brighter, more consistent. And these LED lights have the ability to be better directionally placed so we can light the areas that we want to light. Some of these high-pressure sodium old-style fixtures just throw a general light out. And a lot of times, that upsets neighbors. So, this is a way for you to kind of limit your lighting footprint, if you will. One of the great measures for John McDonald and staff is really gonna be the implementation of an energy management system, where they're gonna be able to control temperatures and see temperatures at all the buildings, do setbacks on days when you have a snow day that is unanticipated. You can set all the schools back remotely through this digital system. So, a great driver of energy savings and also a tremendous way for the school district to do predictive maintenance on equipment. Steam trap replacements, district-wide. We're gonna do about 512 steam traps, one-for-one, like-for-like. A very common measure in energy performance contracts, drives about $9,000 in annual energy savings. This one, taking advantage of all the new roofs that you're doing under the bond work, we're then gonna follow that up with doing solar on all of the roofs. So, this is a wonderful green technology. But in addition to that, it drives $163,000 in annual energy savings. There are curriculum pieces that are available for students. So, they will be exposed to this. We have dashboards and websites so they can do competitions. They can actually see how on sunny days it produces more. And then, as the clouds impact, you know, the building itself, they'll go less production. So, it's really nice for the kids to get exposed to this technology. You do have the ability, as you can see some of these aerial shots, that there is room for expansion on this. So, if the district were to grow or add even more air conditioning in the future, and therefore, they have the ability to add more solar. So, there are some roof space left after we are done. But we felt that this time, based upon what your current loads are, this is the best-sized system for the district today. 10 years from now, could be a different scenario. We also looked at plug-load controllers. So, these are really for some of your window AC units, where we can control copiers, printers, where we can shut things off based upon a schedule. They're all remotely wired. And so, we can go through a Wi-Fi system and then shut these devices off. A lot of times, we find that when you tour schools in the summer hours, on weekends, people forget to shut their AC unit off if it's a window unit. So, we're able to shut those off for them and enable them back on, you know, on Monday morning when they're back at work. So, a nice energy savings. Another one of the goals of the energy performance contract was to replace about 21 unit ventilators over at James Boyd. So, we are gonna do that as part of this project. The unit ventilators are like those boxes in the back there. They're old, they're aged, they're original to the building. So, we're gonna take your brand-new ones as part of this project. These are some of the smaller measures. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so I'll just, I'll mention each one briefly. These are, the first one is building envelope improvements. This is weatherization on your doors. Next is obviously pipe and valve installation, pretty straightforward. We have door replacement. There was a question on this for the high school auditorium. It's a below-grade door, it's down a ramp, it's on the side of the auditorium. So, it's a double door. And that's what we're replacing for the auditorium. And then, on the middle school roof, this building, there's an old door there as well. We're gonna do VFDs on some hot water pumps. We have exhaust fans going on some of the kitchen hoods so that when there's no cooking and/or heat coming off the grills, we can shut off those kitchen hoods. So, that's a nice energy savings. They don't run all day long. The power management component of this project, there are about 1,000 computers district-wide. Again, this is a software-based controller that will enable the computers to come on in the morning and then shut them off in the evening hours when we know there's no more use. So, again, it's really looking at the kids' computers, mostly IT rooms. We then have vending machine controllers. There's nine of those district-wide, shutting those off in the evening hours, turning them back on in the morning. And then, the last two are your compressor controllers on air conditioning and refrigeration equipment. So, really just putting some sophisticated controls on those to drive some energy savings. Oh, this is small, I'm sorry. Ah, that's better. So, when we look at the cash flow, because your building aid here at Elwood is nice, at 63.5%, you drive a very positive cash flow. When we look at your year one, most districts, and you will do a 15-year repayment of this $8.1 million project, your anticipated lease payment in year one with a projected 3.5% interest rate is at almost $700,000. You then have annual energy savings in year one, as I mentioned earlier, about $426,000. Your nice aid, which is your building aid coming back to the district at 339. You have some O&amp;M savings. Those are operational and maintenance savings from the new lights, the new building management system, about $20,000 a year. Then, the rebates, these are estimated, but in our contract, they will be guaranteed so that if PSNG modifies it and the rebates drop, we will still give you the $115,000. They do change it. We do tend the rights and we call them checks on those to make districts whole. So, it happens. But that's based on today, that's what the rebate is. So, the net cash flow to the district in year one with all those is 204,000. So, like I said earlier, a lot of districts do take advantage of this when they have nice aid like yours and, you know, the need to do building improvements. So, when we look at it over the full 18-year term of the contract, it drives a positive $4,320,000 to the district over the next years. The next is the project timeline. So, we have the contract over to your attorney, Ingraham Smith, which is under review now. Hopefully, we can get that executed in March or April, would be very nice. We then would hire BBS, your architects, at that point to do the design work, to send to SED. Probably take them a couple of months to get that to the state. So, we're anticipating June to get that up to the SED. Looking at an SED approval and financing going now to April 2019. So, again, we're at the mercy, as I'm sure you've heard many times before, of the State Education Department approval process. But that's our best guess as of today. Construction commences in May 2019 and then, we'll run full two summers for completion September 2020. So, this is the draft schedule. Obviously, can change. And we'll update you as we go through this. But this is what we see today. Any questions?
So, obviously, the solar panels would depend upon when our roofs get approved.
Correct.
And you've, just so the public knows too, and I know you mentioned it in the beginning, you worked with the facilities folks when they were looking at the bond so that you could coordinate what we've already approved and what you've brought to the table.
Yeah, we did several meetings to that fact and made modifications as appropriate. So, like I said when we started, it was very helpful to have those meetings with Kerry and John McDonald and BBS to do those coordinations so that, you know, the lights that we're putting in under our project are the same as the lights are gonna look under the bond project. So, we just wanna make sure that everything looks seamless. And it was helpful that you had the same architect for both projects.
And if the board would recall, when we contracted with the project manager, it was with the understanding that they would provide oversight to both the bond work and the energy performance contract. So, we have a lot of the same folks working on parallel initiatives, which is very self-competition.
Why don't we work from the center of the table down? Becky, any questions?
I don't wanna say quick, so it's just long. And I apologize if you have a dry stick. But with the savings in the first year, I mean, I just wrote it down from the slide, the $426,000, where are we getting that? Is that comparable school districts? Is that what you believe would be savings on each initiative that you're putting in the plan?
Correct, on the 16 initiatives. So, we identify specifically what each one is going to save.
And then, one more question that I have. With the remote capabilities that we have to turn things on and off, especially with the remote temperature, you know, like the snow day example that we just had, who would have that capability? Would that be John McDonald or that would be multiple people?
No, it's a great question. The district decides who has access. So, some people, you can say, I just want them to have the ability to view the information. And then, you give others the authority to actually make modifications. So, that's up to you guys. You decide, you let us know. We'll give them the correct authorization. And you can change that too, if you go.
So, I guess it's kind of a combination of Julie's question and Becky's question. The, I just want you to reiterate for the public. The savings, the way that you came to these savings, because there's some questions. Some contractors gave us a lot more solar panels than whatever is, was based on what we felt was realistically realizable. Because at the end of the day, if we don't realize those savings, you eat that cost. So, even with the lighting, if we don't reach the savings that, you know, the $400,000, I can't see for me, part of $26,000, you're going to...
We write it, they call it a shortfall.
Write a check for that. Okay, so...
And we have written shortfall checks before in other districts. So, we don't meet the contractual...
And there's also, with the solar panels, too, I'm sorry to interrupt you, there's also different levels of efficiency as opposed to, so you don't necessarily need... I sat on this, on that committee. The, you know, necessarily, it's not so much quantity as opposed to quality. And so, I want the, you need to understand that also.
May I? Because Mrs. Weiss makes a very important point. And I wanna make sure we emphasize for our viewers at home and who are watching the video later, there is no cost to the district or taxpayer by entering into this contract with Johnson Controls. And further, should their projections not be met with realistic savings, they absorb that cost in making up the difference. So, as far as we are concerned as a district and a board, there is no risk associated with entering into this agreement taken by us. The risk is taken by Johnson Controls.
Is that yearly, if they don't realize it yearly or at the end of 18 years?
It's an annual review. So, they do an audit of all of our bills and efficiencies on an annual basis to make sure we're meeting them annually. So, that, and it all gets detailed in the contract, which is a very lengthy contract. As they stated, they've given everything back to Ingraham Smith. John McDonald and I had a conference call with them this morning. We have a follow-up call on Tuesday based on some recommendations that we're now going back and forth with BBS is reviewing so that we can try to get this to the board prior to the March 22nd for hopefully approval. And within there, it will be detailed out what the savings need to be, what they're responsible for on an annual basis.
Okay, that's my question. Ms. Navalito?
So, the only question I have is with respect to the solar panels. If we have a roof issue, can you explain to us how that's handled? Who incurs the cost? Who lifts the panels?
Rob, do you want to? I'm gonna give this one to Rob. He's our project manager, he's the most experienced with it. So, can I go?
Again, my name is Rob Rolston. Ultimately, you're gonna get a warranty on your roof in a little over 20, 25, 30 years, depending on what manufacturing you go with. The solar panels are gonna be ballasted on the roof so there'll be no penetrations. The most common cause of a roof leak is where something goes through the roof. There are seams on the roofs. So, over time, those seams do require maintenance. The points that touch the roof with the solar system are about 10 inches by 10 inches. So, you can get to any part of the roof to service it around modules should a leak happen in year 15 or 20. But you shouldn't have 20 years of roof free roofs in theory with your roof.
So, if there is a repair that has to be made and for argument's sake, it is not accessible or a large portion has to come off, who is responsible for that?
Ultimately, the district does the meetings on the roof whether there's solar on it or not. That is all.
Thank you. John, can you go first?
Go ahead. And the solar panels, I just wanna reiterate, are also warranted for the life of the term of the seams.
That's right, 20 years on.
So, people understand that also. So, if there's a defective panel, then you guys are responsible for replacing it.
And then, in addition, your council makes us secure a payment and performance bond and also an energy savings guarantee bond for not only the performance of the project but also the energy savings of the project over the term. So, if Johnson Controls were to go away, you then have those bonds to make you whole if we're not here.
I just have one more question. If something happens with the solar panel that causes damage to the roof, who is then responsible for that? So, if the solar panel bursts and something, you know, goes through... I don't know, I couldn't imagine what I could do. I'm just saying.
Think of a scenario. I mean, most of damages that occur to a school district are handled under your insurance typically. So, I guess we would make a claim under insurance. And if we add installation on our part, then it would be on us. But typically, any damage to...
There are two independent warranties. That's what we're saying, basically. At the end of the day, it's gonna be too independent.
Correct. Yeah, you'll have your roof warranty and then, you'll have the warranty on your solar panels.
I just wanna say thank you to Kerry and his team. We, so, we definitely went back and forth if we had some questions. We, you know, you came back to us, we had comments as freestanding solar panels are being on the roofs. You came back with the maximum output, which leads to my question as far as the output. Because you guys are underperforming. And say you're supposed to be X9 until the lock, but we're not there yet. Are we locked into 100 solar panels at one school? Or can you add more as you go along to either realize more savings for the district? Or how does that work?
That's a great question. So, if we were short on our savings with the solar panels, in your contract, you're gonna have the option. You could say, Johnson, just write us a check for the shortfall. Or at the district's election, you could say, we want you to do, for that dollar amount, we want you to do more solar panels. So, it's up to you. You decide.
You did answer that, the facilities committee. I just wanted to...
Oh, okay, sorry.
You got that. I just wanna make sure that Kerry knew that. That was all.
You know, that's, that's in your contract.
That's great, thank you.
And so, just to clarify with school temperature. A lot of times, you know, kids are coming to school in the middle of the winter with short sleeves and the teachers are opening the windows and, you know, it's just unbearably hot because the heat is on. So, we've been told again and again that it's these old compressors, these old... You're replacing some of them at Boyd, but these don't have to be replaced. They just have to be what?
Well, some, the ones at Boyd that we identified, the 21 are original to the school. The other ones are gonna be refurbished as part of our project. So, they will be serviced and handled so that we can bring them back up to where they were and be operable.
And you usually do that work during the summer when the students are out there?
We prefer to, yes, especially up there. Definitely on the replacement of the unit ventilators.
Or after hours when the kids...
Okay, and we'll be able to have a temperature? Or not just an on-off, heat on and off?
And it's digitally recorded, which is very important because you can see over the day how that classroom will either heat up and does it in fact get too hot? Because a lot of times, it's perception. Teachers are different. And it's very effective to be able to show someone here's the digital recording from your room that shows exactly what the temperatures are. I'm not saying the complaints are gonna go away because people are people, but you'll be able to clearly show that it's 70 degrees at set point all day long. So, it's a very effective tool for that, for those discussions.
And I'm sure you've done many of these refurbishments in other districts. There's not asbestos issues. There's not, there's nothing like that.
And if it is, it's included under our cost. If we know that there's asbestos on a piece of earth...
And then, obviously, they're not doing that while kids are in session.
Right. So, on some of those valves, we know we have asbestos that is included in our prices.
Okay. And just another comment that I, that you did mention, which I think is amazing because adding the student participation and education in all this is... I guess I'm already shaking my head, but... I went to a breakout session in the NISBA convention and they had energy folks there talking about all projects that they did with students in science research and even some of the elementary students getting involved in how their school was saving money and how they were, you know, going more green for the planet. And I think that's a great, you know, added aspect to all of this. So, I appreciate your mentioning that.
We typically like to put flat-screen TV somewhere in the school. District usually tells us.
Yeah, I saw that in one of the districts.
They see, you know, it's like a dashboard on a car and they can see the production of a unit. I mean, it'll also be on the website. But it's nice for them every day to see that. Kind of reinforce...
Some more conversation. Turn the switches on.
Yeah, a little bit.
That'd be crazy.
Is that the Christmas message?
Any other questions or comments? So, let's see. You know what? We have one question from the audience. Do, go ahead, Tom.
Oh, thank you. Very nice, I'm all for this. Just three questions, actually. Just from an air exchange perspective. From an air exchange perspective, are we recycling maybe? How many air exchanges are there per minute, per hour? Is a fraction of that being recycled, recirculated? That's question one. At the end of this, how close are we to kind of be LEED certified? You know, in most of them, are we like 90% close to being LEED certified? And then, the third question is, if our savings are greater than projected, do we write you back a check?
I'll start with the easy one. I'll start with the easy one, no. You keep the extra...
We don't, you do.
You keep the extra money. The first question was regarding the air changes per hour. So the state education department requires its 30 CFM of fresh air per student in the class. So that's a requirement from the state. So specifically on the new unit developments that we're putting in at Boyd, they will meet those requirements. Most of the other classrooms that are original to the school meet those requirements as well, but the state's gonna definitely make sure at Boyd, when we do those community units, we meet those 30 CFM of fresh air per student. It is a combination of research from the classroom as well as drawing in fresh air at the same time, so it's not pure fresh air. It's a little bit of both. What was the second?
LEED certified.
Oh, LEED certified. Typically, our projects, because it's not a new building, there is a LEED certification for existing buildings. What we typically go for after our projects is an Energy Star Award. Many of our school districts on Long Island, like Comex Schools, I think they got about 10 of them. It's a, it's a program that works really well for schools to get Energy Star Awards. And I think a lot of the people in communities are much more, they recognize the Energy Star logo more so than the LEED logo. This is the first one I've ever had a LEED question of my year, so thank you. We will, we can look at the LEED for existing buildings. My experience is that it's very difficult to reach in a school setting. It can be done, but typically that's with a new building coming up out of the ground where you go for that LEED certification.
Do they apply for it?
Yeah, we will. I mean, it's nice for us, we're able to get LEED existing buildings. I just don't want to tell you I'm gonna get it. I don't think, it'll be a challenge, but I do believe we will get Energy Star Awards because I'm confident based on my other districts that have achieved it. After we've done the job, we're gonna get you to that level of Energy Star certification.
No, I meant, I know you can't, you probably can't get it for an older building, actually a new building, but my question more was, would this be LEED equivalent at the end of this?
I think it'll improve your score on the LEED rating. I just don't, I don't know if it's gonna meet the LEED, you know, there's silver and gold and platinum. I don't know if it's gonna get us to one of those levels. I would have to look at it. So we'll look at it, we definitely will, and if we can achieve it, that's wonderful. I just, I don't wanna say yes.
Does the board have any more questions? So thank you, Mr. Hearn. Thanks for the presentation. I think, I especially wanna thank Carrie. This has been a long time coming, this energy performance contract and a lot of work from your office and your staff and really, really appreciate it. And I think it's gonna be a big benefit to the district, so I thank you on behalf of the board and the facilities committee, of course. But this is exciting and it's good stuff, Robyn, so thanks.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, Carrie, you're up next. Budget presentation.
So tonight, we're gonna go over basically the instructional component of the budget and touch again on the revenue information that we've been talking about over the past couple workshops. This is our third workshop. After this, we have one more, which is in April, which is where we also anticipate to adopt the budget. However, we do have a meeting March 22nd where we will most likely be bringing further information as we are closing in on the final budget information. So for 2018-19, our goals, just to remind everybody, was to maintain all programs, K-12, which including the Teachers College reading and writing workshop that we have now, K-8, the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative, the advanced placement offerings in our high school, the AIS and enrichment support, K-12, and all our music, art, and athletic offerings that we currently have in place in 1718. We're also looking to maintain our fiscal health for the district. We currently have no fiscal stress designation from the controller. That is the first time in three years that we've received that, so we're proud of that and we're looking to keep that going. We're looking to continue to fund reserves. We're hoping to create a capital reserve that will require voter approval. And we're looking to maximize our undesignated reserve at 4%, which is the limit that we're allowed to go to, and we are currently there. So for 2018-19, since we last discussed the budget, the tax cap calculation has been filed with the controller's office as of February 28th. It is available to the public on open book. BOSI's budget has been received and reviewed and we're continuing to work on contracts for next year for that piece. The additional retirement notifications have been received from staff members, from power professionals, clerical, teaching assistants, and teachers. So we're continuing to see savings within some of those lines as we replace that lower salaries. And staffing continues to be updated almost on a daily basis right now. So this is an updated slide from last time where we stand in the budget. Again, program is 75% of our budget, the capital component of it is 13%, and our administrative component is just over 11% of the budget. Program is what we're gonna go through tonight as we've already discussed administrative and capital. So the instructional initiatives that we're working under, the guidance we've received from both the board and from what the educational programs are looking for, continue the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative at the middle school as well as John Glenn High School. For next year, we will be grades six through 10 in the One-to-One Chromebooks. We're maintaining current class sizes, grades K through 5. We're implementing a nine-period-a-day at the middle school. And March 22nd, we will have a presentation to go through how that implementation will take effect. And we're continuing the Capstone Program at John Glenn High School, adding an additional guidance counselor up to John Glenn High School, and adding additional AIS support from math at Harley. So with the technology budget, we're again, the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative and One-to-One Devices in 1819 will be grades six through 10. We're adding some promo cards to our grades K-12 as well as grades 11, 12, so that more and more children have easy access to computers within the classroom environment and they don't have to go to computer labs. Enhance the district's disaster recovery program with off-site recovery storage. This is something that we've been looking at for the past couple of years as we put together our disaster recovery plan in the district about two years ago, and we're always looking to enhance that so that our data is always protected. In the area of special education, we're maintaining all our programs for children with the highest needs. We're enhancing the mental health team with the support through the guidance department, adding that additional guidance counselor up to the high school, assist the mental health support team. 2019-20, this actually becomes a mandate that we will have to have guidance services in grades K through 12. So we're trying to get ahead of that mandate and it's something we'll continue to monitor and look at District Y as those mandates start getting put down on to us in the 2019-20 school year. At this time, the increase for summer program, which is on the governor's proposal, has been increased. It's, currently we're funded for all our summer special education programs at 80% the federal government pays for. The proposal right now is actually to go to the district's aid ratio, which ours is 46%. So it's almost half of a cost now to us that's going to be added to the budget. So right now, we have $72,000 earmarked for that additional expense. April 1st, we're hoping we have a final budget out that we'll know whether or not this is going to be a true proposal put out in place. It is my understanding the Senate and the House are not in support of this, so we are hopeful that that is something we can reallocate in the budget. So this is just to go over K-5 enrollment. You can see we're keeping our class sizes the same. All sections are the same, six sections, pretty much in all levels except fourth, fifth grade. You can see currently we have six in fourth grade and seven, seven sections in fifth grade. What we're looking at next year is seven sections in fourth grade and six sections in fifth grade. So it's a flip of where those individuals would lie. 25 children currently in the average fourth grade class. It would decrease the average number of students in next year's class and the purpose for that is, that is our high E&amp;L population, so we need to make sure we're supporting those students with some high needs in those classes and have the right instructional program, Dr. Lawson.
Yeah, well done, Carrie. If I was a member of the board, I would have a question about fourth grade and why it's a bit different than some of the other grade levels, and Carrie is right on the money. We have a very strong concentration of students who have English as their second language in the fourth grade. We cannot responsibly cluster all the children into one classroom, so dividing them into at these two classrooms will be, will enable us to provide the services we feel necessary, which does require that additional section. Fourth grade, that cohort bears watching closely. There is a threshold that we are approaching that if we exceed at the fourth grade level would require us by state regulation to offer a bilingual program at that grade level. So we are constantly monitoring new entries, particularly in that grade level, to make certain that if we do come to that threshold, we'll provide services in a new capacity. We get regular reports about new entrants who require E&amp;L services and we have a very large concentration in fourth grade.
And that is fourth grade next year, third grade current?
Correct.
So the instructional component consists of all of our teaching staff salaries, our teaching assistants, some power professionals that are working within the classroom, supplies as it relates to the students, BOSI programs, basically everything that is supporting the instruction of all of our children. The transportation budget as well is part of that. We've increased that based on CPI at this point in time. That contract actually goes up on CPI as of May 2018, so we really don't know what that budget will be until after the budget is approved by the voters. So we have to, we're watching the trend of what CPI is doing so that we can try to get that contract in line with the best we can at this point in time. Contractual supply adjustments have been made based on four-year trends. We're looking at what the actual expenditures have been the past four years. We've been able to decrease our workbook textbooks and that's basically because of the One-to-One Initiative. We're not using textbooks as much anymore. Some monies that are in the budget are just for replacing some old worn books that are being used. And supplies are being decreased based on the fact that we're purchasing more and more off the bed data, state contracts, and cooperative bidding laws, and based on our board policy that we're able to piggyback other municipalities' bids that they have done, so we're able to start seeing more and more savings. So you can see the 1718 to 1819 budget, it's about just under a million dollar increase. It's about 2.17% increase in the instructional component.
Carrie, if I may, I want the board to have clarity on a piece of information regarding items like the transportation budget, where we can't yet have a definitive number of working increases. Carrie and I share the same school of thought of when we have an unknown in the budget. And what we do is budget the worst-case scenario. So Carrie has included in the budget an extreme increase to that contract and budgeting for it to keep the district safe and protected, hoping that it comes in less and we can realize the savings and apply those funds to whatever area. But for budgeting purposes, when we do come across an unknown or something that has limited predictability, we budget at worst case.
Such as the increase in gas costs?
Anything that fluctuates, we budget, yes, we budget at the worst-case scenario. We budget for record snowfalls, fuel increases, we have to do that. It's the responsible way to budget, which is when, often when we come at this point in school year and there's something we've done without to this point, we look back at some of those projections and say, okay, we have flexibility to do this item that's been on hold because we didn't expend the fuel oil costs that we anticipated because of the excessively warm February that we experienced, but we budget at worst-case scenario.
Carrie, how much would the health insurance rate increase this year?
For the 20, or 2018, it was about eight and a half, nine percent average increase. There's various rates that we work with. So we don't know what the rates are for 2019, which is six months of our budget that we're trying to project out right now. So that's a large piece that we're working on there. We did budget nine percent increase on top of the current rates for the 2019, the six months that hit us in 2019. And again, that's also based on information we're receiving from the insurance plan. They do give us quarterly updates as to where they're projecting, where they foresee their rates going. But again, it's an average rate that we use. Sometimes the Medicare reimbursement rate comes in lower, but the family rate goes up higher. So it is a number two that we work closely to try to make sure that we can cover the actual true expense that's being hit. On the Chromebooks, so we are going down in our workbooks and our textbooks because we're going more to Chrome, which means a lot of sense. Have we levied out any costs on that or do we still, with the maintenance and stuff, do we still see an increase in those costs or is that just under another budget? Like is, so this is going down, but another one's going up? No, actually, we are levied out because what we're doing with the Chromebooks is a three-year lease that we do through the BOSI's co-sir. So, correct, so as the lease payment falls off, we take another one on, so it's a net effect to the budget. And that's something Jean and I work closely with BOSI's on to come up with what are the purchases that we gave in technology for the upcoming year. And you will see on the March 22nd agenda, the request for next year's lease payment. So while a payment falls off the books, a new one comes on within that lease program. And I mean, that cycle has been going since before my time here. It's been, it's a great program. Not every district takes advantage of it and it's hard to do it in that first year because you have to take that initial payment on, but once you get it flowing, it works very nicely. And does that incorporate like damage to the... We always go through the count to see what is phasing out as our children that are in the ninth grade year, some of their Chromebooks may be older, so some of those are getting phased out, but we do keep them for spare parts. The tech team is very good with doing repairs here on site for any broken screens or damage to the, to the Chromebooks themselves. And it's basically by using the old devices that we had that had those devices that may have been aged out. So we carefully go through the numbers and we always make sure we add a little extra for potential new enrollees into the district. It's about, I wanna say, Jean, how many Chromebooks a year that we're purchasing?
About 70.
Every year at this point?
About.
About. Anything else? So to move over to the revenue side of things on the budget, the tax levy for 2018-19, which we did mention back in February, which has formally now been reported to the controller, the levy limit for the district is 4.21%. That is the maximum allowed without requiring a supermajority vote. It's a simple majority vote, it's 50% plus one, so we could go to that limit and just have that 50 plus one on the budget. As I stated before, it is recommended the district maximizes revenue whenever possible and tries to get up as high as we can with that limit, given the tax law that's in place. As we've experienced in the past, we could have less than a 1% levy in future years and setting our base down at a little bit lower could hurt us in those years. So we do set the levy every year. We don't set the levy until October, so the board has flexibility. The voters are not voting on a levy, they're voting on an expenditure budget. However, the tax levy has, has to be disclosed to the public. Should we decide to pierce it, it has to be stated in the resolutions. At this point in time, our budget is being built within the levy limit that's allowed for the district. So what we do need to understand though, that there is conception out there that 2% is the levy limit, that's based on Newsday's lovely front cover when CPI came out back in January, it was all over the front page. Districts can go to 2%. You will start seeing districts are everywhere from a negative levy limit to four, five, six percent, and that's all based on their own personal calculations and numbers within their budget when they do this formula. So as these numbers are starting to get released, I anticipate Newsday doing an article soon on this as it is available now to the public. So again, we are under the New York State limit, we're building the budget within the number that has been provided. We reported a 4.21%, which requires a simple majority vote from the taxpayers. It's a revenue increase of 1.886, the 1.8 million. And based on the conversation we had in February, the board has guided us in administration to try to keep that budget at the levy limit under 3%, preferably around 2.5%. So that's a $1.1 million increase, so you can see the difference of 1.8 million to 1.1. It's about just, just over $700,000, 768 to be exact, that we would be technically, what we say is leaving on the table for future years. So we're building a budget with 2.5% successfully, including all those items I just previously discussed in the instructional budget, as well as the items we've already talked about in the administration and capital components. So other revenue sources that we start seeing, we did decrease the undesigned fund balance. We currently allocate just about 1.5 million. We're decreasing it by 225 to get to 1.25, and that's part of the fund balance that previously was almost $3 million, so we've been slowly trying to get away from relying on that money within our regular operating budget. The ERS reserve, we're appropriating 823,000, and that's to cover the ERS expense for next year. That is something that can be done very simply. As we've stated, we're looking to use that money as well as refund it again in future years with any other future savings we have. So we're looking to use the reserves for the purpose of which they're set up for. And we did see a decrease in student tuition at this point in time. We have students that attend our district from other districts for certain programs and due to students that are graduating or transferring into other type of programs for their needs, we are seeing a decline in that. Again, at this point in time, those numbers are always constantly changing. We are seeing a decrease in rental revenue. If you recall, this year, we put together a new board policy for building use and based on that, actually, less people are using our facilities, which is great because we're not seeing as much wear and tear on the buildings. However, it was a revenue source and we are not leaving that level that we had projected for this current school year, so we're decreasing that based on the actual usage of the buildings. And right now, we're projecting state aid to be flat, and that's based on the runs we received in January. We are hopeful that we'll have an on-time budget, which is April 1st, and at that point, we'll be able to determine the actual state aid revenue.
Give a little intel on that. I had the fortune of traveling to Albany this weekend and hearing, having the opportunity to meet with some of our elected officials in their Albany offices. And what we heard very consistently is that they were happy and the governor's original proposal for the budget included over a $700 million increase to state aid for public schools, which for the governor is a wonderful starting point. The overall dollar figure that was sought by NISBA and NICE and some other governing bodies, bodies who have advocacy interest, was about 2.1. Now, it was across the board, a billion, I'll tell you. It was pretty well understood across the board that that number would not be achieved. But the number that the officials, including the majority leader, Senator Flanagan, felt comfortable articulating is that $700 million increase would likely increase to more like 1.3 or 1.4 billion dollar increase. So what percentage of that would be received in the Elwood School District is not driven by formula, so we will have to wait and see the run. But hearing that the increase may be doubled is certainly advantageous to all public schools.
Can I ask you a quick question about the student tuition?
Yep.
Is that a net cost after, you know, their expenses are coming in? But we...
When we take students into our programs, there's actually a state tuition rate that's... Every school district has a different rate and it's a formula-based rate based on the actual numbers we've sent over to the state. So that number is based on what our tuition rate would have been potentially for next year and the amount of students that are being either transferred out or graduating out of our programs. So it's, it is a net cost essentially, but a lot of these children are in programs we're already running, will continue to run as well, and they would help offset some of those expenditures of the staff and needs that we had in that building. So while we'll still remain with the staffing and our programs are not changing, we potentially have some of our kids taking on spots in those programs, so it's, it's an ever-moving mind. You know, when it comes to special education, the children moving in and children moving out continuously, as well as the same happening in other districts, and they're looking for proper placements, we offer some programs that other districts in the surrounding areas don't. So as they get new enrollees, we could potentially see somebody try to be placed within our programs October, November of next year, based on their moment in their current district, not offering a program that we offer. And we do do the same, we send some of our children out to surrounding districts. If they don't, if there's not a BOSI's program or something of that sort, we try to look at the other school districts and their programs that they're offering. If they have space available, we'll send our children there and repay tuition then, based on their state-approved rate.
Thank you.
So what we've done here is a four-year projection. If you recall, we've been doing these for the past couple of years now. This projection is based on the 2%, the 2.5% levy increase and the current budget that's being proposed. What we do though, again, these are projections, anybody that works with finances and numbers, especially your own personal banking, you can only, you only know what you know at this point in time. We don't know CPI for the future, we don't know what TRS rates are going to be, we don't know what the health insurance rates are gonna be, we don't know transportation costs, we don't know what the levy limit's gonna be, we don't know state aid. So it's based on trend, is how we do these projections, what's been going on the past four years and how do we project out the next future years. And when we do the projections, we do it based on what we actually think is gonna be spent. So while we budget conservatively, trying to make sure we're taking into account all of these type of things that may or may not happen, we then do our projections for the four-year plan off of what we think... we then do our projections for the four-year plan off of what we think could actually result based on what we're seeing happening from past budgets. So you'll see, based on 2.5% levy of the revenue stream, we do start operating again in a deficit in future years. You will see changes within the fund balance lines down there at the bottom. The retirement contribution, as I stated before, that's the ERS monies that we would use to start help pay that bill every year, does go down, so that 1920, we actually would no longer have an ERS reserve. You'll also see that the allocation of the appropriated does start to go down, and that's based on conversations we've had over the past four or five years, that we are trying to get away from relying on that. So this is what we will look at, a 2.5% levy. Again, when I stated before, when you set your levy, you're setting your base for future years. So when you leave money on the table, you can't go back to what that levy limit was for next year's number when we start calculating, it's off of what we actually levy, it's not off of what we could have levied. So if you look at the next slide, assumes that we went to the tax levy cap of 4.2%. And you can see that we're starting to operate in a surplus. We are starting to, we continue to use reserves, but we're also able to fund reserves. So it's a little bit more of a stability within the budget and in our finances, which would help in our bond, in our ratings, it helps the fiscal stress scores. So this is really just to show you what it looks like if we go to less than the levy limit and if we actually take advantage of the opportunity to maximize our revenue stream at 4.2%. The levies that we've used in the future years here is always at 2%. And again, that's just based on the fact that CPI does fluctuate significantly, and we have seen that happen in the past four years, and the tax levy was met in place. So again, I sound like a broken record, but as your business official, it's my job to tell you, go to the levy limit. It requires a simple majority vote to get to 4.2%. It does maximize the revenue available to the district, not only now, but in the future years, and it provides fiscal stabilization. The budget we're proposing now is at 2.5% levy limit. So going to 4.2%, what we would recommend would actually be security enhancements district-wide, and that helps sets the base for the future years. Julie, do you have a question?
Yeah, when you figured out this four-year plan, you figured it out with a 2%?
The first one is at the 2.5% that we're currently proposing, but the years for 2019, 2020 is at 2%.
Put 2%.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So as you see there, we are recommending going to 4.2%. And by going to that, that's an additional $768,000. And these are the items that we are looking at to add to the budget based on current conversations that we've had in the district and that are going on within the state and the nation. So we're looking at different security measures that we can put in place. There is nothing here on this list that is happening, there is nothing definitive at this point in time. Further conversation to occur as soon as I finish up this presentation. But we're looking at additional security guards, potentially security booths at the driveway entrances, vestibules at all of our buildings, bulletproof film placed strategically throughout the district, metal detectors, armed guards. The conversation can go on for quite some time and that list can grow. So these are certain things we're starting to look at in administration based on the security forum we've had and feedback we've been receiving since that point in time. The increase would not require an override of the tax gap. It would be within the 4.2% for a simple majority. There is potential also through the state budget to receive money for this. Part of the conversations that are now happening with the state budget is that they'll maybe shift some of their dollars that they are looking to allocate to the school districts to actually help support some safety and security measures. And again, we're looking at other things that maybe won't require additional expenses that we can just do internally based on the resources available to us.
Now, if there's just one point of clarity I can make for the board and for the community. Firstly, the security enhancements that are listed should not be interpreted by any member of the community as a decision made by either the administration or the board, nor should they be considered a recommendation. They are listed as the items that came up at the forum that warrant discussion from the Board of Education, which will follow this presentation, and I think we have to make that crystal clear. The other point is, for clarification, the instructional budget was built at a 2.5% levy limit. Carrie's made that very clear. Our levy limit maximum is 4.21%. The board has the authority with charging the administration of building the budget and any number in between. Before the era of the tax cap, all boards of education were charged to work with the administration to decide what they feel the comfort level of a community might be based upon what was being offered within the program and expenses. And that was hard work. As much as the tax cap was not welcomed in difficult economic times when we had to make deep and painful cuts due to the cap, it took away the guesswork on the part of administration and the board of what might the community accept. We're kind of back in that position this year. Because of our exemptions, we have a flexible spending cap that goes to 4.21%. And it's the charge of the board to decide where they feel the community's comfort level would be of putting a percent of increase out to the board. The recommendation is to go to the full levy limit of 4.21%, but this is not an A or B conversation. We at minimum need to go to 2.5% to keep the program in place as projected with those enhancements that we focused on, but have the flexibility of anything between 2.5 and 4.21%, which we would identify as security enhancements based upon conversations taking place recently. But that is completely at the board's discretion with an understanding of what you feel the community wants.
So given that, our next budget workshop, as I mentioned, is April 12th, and that is when it is intended for the board to adopt the budget. April 1st is the state budget deadline, so we should hopefully have runs on time so that we can determine exactly what our revenue stream is to help support the rest of the programs. And any additional state aid we receive, we would be looking to reduce that fund balance allocation from the 1.25 down a little bit further to get us to where we are not relying on that any longer. March 22nd, we do have a regular board meeting, it is not a scheduled budget workshop. However, we do feel, given the information that's been coming through and the questions that have come up on safety, we'll have to have another budget discussion at that point in time. So whether or not it will be a formal presentation or just a conversation with the board, we don't know what information we'll have at that point. We're continuing to work with vendors to get pricing out on different security measures. We're having a conversation tonight as well, so we'd like to get feedback from the board. What do you want us to start looking at? So that we can try to determine a dollar value to support our recommendation to go above 2.5%. So we're continuing to work on this, the budget is ever-changing, nothing is locked in at this point in time. And March 22nd is when we'll bring further information to the board as per whatever conversation comes out of the Z-Makes meeting. Other questions on this?
I have a question. Can you go back a few slides to your four-year projection at the 4.2?
Jean?
Uh-oh.
Can I go back?
No, Sarah.
Can I see that?
It's gone.
No.
All right, stop. When I'm looking at this, when you're doing, I think you said it, and I'm just asking again. When I'm looking at the 2019, 2020, that is, you're assuming a 2% cap those years.
It assumes, correct, 2% cap. It does have a revenue increase for state aid based on the increases we've seen over the past five years. There are some other revenue adjustments that get data there. And then the expenditures too are always based on what the trend has been in the past.
So if we went to the 4.2, Carrie, that would enable us to possibly cushion ourselves
For future?
For future years. We would be, that would be part of the plan.
Correct.
And we wouldn't just be maxing out like an instructional budget to where in the next year, if we're hit with a 1% or something really devastating, that we're not looking to cut everything, that we build it with a 2%.
We're looking to sustain the educational program we currently have in place and not make any drastic changes to it. Continue to make modifications as per the student needs and whatever other mandates are being put at us. But it's to maintain program across the board in the next couple of years.
So it would give a little cushion, we could do some security measures, but it wouldn't be a drastic cut in future years if we went to 1%?
We don't anticipate that.
Our instructional budget is still within that 2.5.
I have a question on the last slide. How do you plan for... Class, the class size?
The class size.
How do you plan for late entries? It seems like, you know, we get a lot in August and September, and then even throughout the year. I've noticed my daughter, who's a bit great, her classes increased in their DU. Are we at the limits, like do these represent the limits, or is there enough cushion in there to add a little?
To answer your question, when we check the enrollment reports at the administrative level just about every week, and what I've noted is a typical pattern in Elwood is plus one, minus one. Our enrollment is fluid, and it tends to be a balance of students entering and exiting the district. When we have our class sizes starting out at an average of 25, they tend to stay close to that during the year. But we're not near the contractual limit, and we would be very hesitant to add sections at the elementary level once the year has begun. There's a lot of reasons why you would never split a class. The secondary level, you note through your board agendas throughout the year, an additional 0.2 here, an additional 0.2 there. A teacher teaching in Overage, secondary level is far more fluid based upon student enrollment, which classes they sign up for versus which they change into. But I think when you review the elementary proposal, you can consider that fairly concrete, even if we have late entrance in August and things like that.
Okay, so you don't necessarily stack the classrooms at the limit?
I don't think that would be good planning on our part because one of the most difficult challenges that you would face at the elementary level is splitting a class section once the year has begun.
And I saw a decrease in the second grade, is that just population, or is that immigration of going from second to third grade? Or it's just a lower...
Okay, it's from the lower year coming in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we're happy with the class sizes. We think this is fairly attractive. When you compare our elementary classes to surrounding districts, we are very favorable to most. There are some that have smaller class sizes, but we are certainly in the more favorable category by comparison. There are tough decisions to make, and we want the class sizes to be manageable. Research on class size is interesting. Most of it says, once you crack the 18 threshold, it doesn't, going from 23 to 24, 24 to 25, doesn't have the instructional impact that is viewed by keeping it under 18. So I'm comfortable bringing these numbers forward. If we were rich, if we were spoiled with riches, yeah, I might add an intersection here and there. But I am very comfortable bringing these sizes forward to the board.
I mean, I can attest to having a gather of children, that my older kids have sat into classes in the elementary gates with, my second one has 28 kids in the classroom. And yet I've had a third grade class with less than just about 18. So definitely a great one, it fluctuates. I've just noticed a lot of population that seems to come in lately, you know, in August. And, you know, even now throughout the years, I haven't seen it as much as I've seen this year, where there seems to be students moving throughout.
I'll be...
Which is great, they're moving to Elwood.
I'll be happy to furnish the board with our year-end versus our year-start.
Yeah.
On a grade level, so you can see what I typically see. But it's really interesting to me that our plus and minus tend to balance out each time. When we lose a job, we gain a job. Our student stability rate is still about 90%, but the comings and goings are interesting. There was once funding available to state that you could apply for grants for class size reduction. This is some years ago. But the number was 18. You had to keep your elementary class sizes at 18 or below to qualify for the additional aid from the state. And that's based upon way the research breaks small class size versus a traditional class size.
And I'm sure that aid was an equivalent to what actually sectioned.
Certainly was not.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, thank you.
Can you explain to me how the nine-period day can help the middle school class sizes? Because we have had residents that have come here and they, your children, are in that outlier class. So while I appreciate averages, I'm kind of more focused on actuals, especially in the middle school.
Very thoroughly, graphically broken down by what a typical student day will be in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and what the sections will look like in each core curriculum and special area on March 22nd.
Thank you. Also, I appreciate all the hard work that has been done. Since I had gotten onto the board, we were not financially in a great place. And since then, the administration has been charged to find cost-saving initiatives, and we are no longer in fiscal stress, which is great. I'm nervous about the tax levy and the misconception that 2% is 2%. I appreciate that you were able to put a solid proposal thus far at a 2.5%. I just think going forward, if we're going to include these security enhancements and bring us back up, we have to be really, really clear. I think you've done a great job so far. But I think it's important, and it's a tough balance to strike, where leaving money on the table, which got us in trouble many years ago, and then we were so deeply in a hole, our Moody's rating was affected. Now we're finally back in business, in the place we should be. But there's that balance as to what the taxpayer is comfortable with. So I'm struggling with that myself.
And I'm going to answer a question that I anticipated hearing from the board that I hadn't heard yet. Jean, can you please go to the enhancements slide? By the way. One more forward. Thank you. So the question I anticipated hearing, as we've stated several times, that the instructional program budget was built at 2.5%. I anticipated the board asking what would the instructional program look like at 2%. Erase this slide. We would not be able to have the funding to accomplish any of those issues.
I just have one more question. With respect to mental health, obviously that is our major focus these days. It always has been, but now it's at the forefront. Can we anticipate, or do we need at some point to look at the middle school and consider bringing in another counselor there as well?
Great question, and thank you for asking it. The budget proposal at 2.5% provides for an additional guidance council to the high school, where we feel the greatest need is because of the rather large caseload that each of our three counselors currently has. And we would look to redesign the way services are given within the guidance department at the high school should this budget be included and approved. Your question about K to 8, Mrs. Lockman correctly referenced a mandate that begins, an unfunded mandate that has come from New York State regarding elementary counseling being a requirement beginning in the 1920s school year. So we do want to plan ahead, and I think the board should anticipate an additional counselor included in next year's budget proposal that would help us make up that gap at the elementary level. That said, I'm not certain that a guidance counselor is the most desirable resource to take on a K to 12 role. I think perhaps what our better alternative would be is having our existing guidance counselors taking some responsibility to meet the requirement and work along our elementary students. And then use the flexibility in staffing to hire a K to 12 psychologist with the training to address a lot of the mental health issues that we feel are proactive in nature and addressing student need. If the board sees fit and feels that that is a proposal we'd like to hear more about, we can include it in the conversation on March 22nd. I would consider it part of what is a rationale for going above 2.5. Because when we're talking about security enhancements, we can talk about concrete things, capital projects like vestibules and such, but we can also talk about staffing that would be dedicated towards addressing security concerns. And for me, prevention is the number one program we promote to address some of these concerns that have been discussed recently. Adding to our mental health staff, adding to the report, support that we have for crisis intervention and students in need would be terrific. If we had the financial flexibility, we would absolutely include that proposal a year ahead of the mandate. If the board is interested in hearing more about that and having the administration add it to the proposal, it does bring us above 2.5, but we would be happy to include that information. information.
Thanks, Karen. We have one in the elementary level?
Each building has a dedicated full-time psychologist. The elementary share a social worker. The middle school and the high school each have a social worker. And we have three guidance counselors currently at Glenn, and two guidance counselors currently at the middle school.
So adding, instead of adding an elementary counselor, adding a psychologist, like you just said, we have an additional to cover that K to 12.
Right.
If we had an additional K to 12 person, and I would recommend the psychologist, then that person would be able to pick up the workload, enabling our counselors to split some time in elementary level.
So the recommendation from the state is a guidance counselor, K-12, not as a, but you're saying we could use a K-12 psychologist to kind of mandate so that our guidance counselors can go down?
The mandate requires guidance services to be there.
But not work from?
It doesn't require personnel to be present in the building. It requires guidance services. So if we added K to 12 psychology and gave that person some responsibilities that our guidance counselors are currently taking at the secondary level, that would give them scheduling flexibility to spend portions of their time at the elementary level. I'm hearing that the board would like to hear more about this proposal on March 22nd, and perhaps the board is interested in the instructional program going above 2.5% to be inclusive of a K to 12 PPS member. Am I hearing correctly? I'm not asking you to agree to it. I'm asking you to hear more about the proposal.
No, I think it would be prudent, so I'll just ask you. I think it would be prudent to hear the proposal and to then have a conversation afterwards. That would be our duty.
Support me reading. So that will be done.
We have shadow.
Yeah, just to listen.
It shall be done.
Carrie, I have a quick question. We came to the capital project that's coming up. So it was floating around that we may have a proposed capital reserve fund or TRS fund. Is any of that budget for, you know, in excess of the 2.5? I mean, if you're just 4.2, what, let me, are we going to be funding any of those reserves? Is that something that we're going to be looking into?
We're not looking at this point in time to put a specific line item in the expenditure budget to formally fund a capital reserve. We'll need to establish that reserve. And part of that resolution would then be in future years, any monies that may be underspent or additional revenues received would be able to fund that reserve at that point in time. We're not looking to add an expenditure line to create that reserve. We would be using any savings that we would see in years in our department.
Speaking of reserves and advocacy, there is still very lively discussion at the state level about changing legislation allowing districts to create a reserve line for the teachers' retirement system. As you know, that is a major cost driver typically to increases in our budget. It is difficult to predict. It is difficult to plan. If the regulation allowed us to create a reserve to fund TRS, much in the same way we do ERS, that would be very beneficial for our future financial planning. And there seems to be some steam and momentum picking up that regulation could come forward.
And again, that would be funded through savings, any expenditure lines or additional revenue.
Okay, I think to the bottom of what that we may be establishing by putting monies from the budget to that, so I was wondering if that cleared that this would be excess monies or additional revenues that come through that would fund us?
And it would be very clear within the resolution that the community is reading that that's how it would be.
Perfect.
And I'm a community member, and I hear excess money, and I want to know how that happens. It's what I stated earlier. We always budget at the worst-case scenario. We always budget for high-priced students moving into the district that we need to prepare for, for special education services and things like that. Fuel oil increases, bad snow weather, all of those unpredictables, we budget at worst-case scenario. Effective budgeting, planning, and spending will result in a fund balance if you've done your job correctly, because not everything comes out of the worst-case scenario. You have to be prepared for unanticipated expenses that develop through the year. If they are not realized, then you have fund balance at the end of the year. And that's what enables you to finance your reserves, fund your reserves.
Carrie?
I pay attention when you talk.
Any other questions?
Yes. One more, speaking of capital reserve funds. Capital reserve funds could be used for something like security vestibules.
Yes, it would be, the capital reserve would be established for specific projects.
Oh, we would have to specifically state what the projects would be?
Specific to a point. It's all in a worded resolution, which council would do for us. And I will obtain further guidance on that for March 22nd as to how we would propose that to be, so that we're not discussing it on April 2nd to make that decision. But we'll bring forward a sample resolution for the March 22nd meeting, so that you can see how it gets worded. Sometimes you could do a capital reserve and say it's to do roofs. And you want to raise $11 million to do roofs by a certain point in time. And you would fund that reserve over that course of time. So we could do it for, what we're looking at is the items that were on that list, I bond items, that we did not include. So if you recall, our BCR was $60 million projects. We did a bond for $34 million. So we still have quite a bit of work to be done within the district. So we would be picking up some of those items to be specifically done through a capital reserve project. And again, you set the time limit as how long you want to build that reserve. Once you build it to that point, you can a little overfund it, but you don't lose the money. It stays there until you have the opportunity to go ahead and do a project.
So if it gets approved to have a capital reserve, it would, we would, it is not yet designated?
Correct.
And keep in mind, the community votes twice to establish the reserve and to spend the money that was deposited into the reserve.
Okay, so that would be on a yearly basis?
It would be, if you put out a 10-year savings plan for roof replacement and cycle, 10 years from now, the community would have to authorize that expenditure. That's why it tends to be far more attractive to include projects in your typical operating budget. So the community votes to support the budget in its entirety, and then the board is administration is charged with that being those expenses.
I know we don't have, like, a magic globe to predict years, but going forward, but how much, how big of an anomaly is it that this 4-point, you know, this tax levy being this high this year is? Like, is that, do we expect, like, next year it's going to be five? Or this is really kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity?
No, it's, I mean, if you look at the history of districts and the fluctuation that we've had, I mean, we've had alone from almost a negative levy on our own, just over less than 1% all the way now up to 4%. Where there have been some districts that have gone negative up to 10 or down to 2 and all over the place. It really depends on all the components of that formula, your property growth factor that the state sets for you. Depends on what CPI is. What is the debt that the district has? What's the building aid that's coming in that's part of your exclusion? Does TRS and ERS exceed the 2% increase underneath what the legislation is for that particular exclusion? So it's very hard to project out if we would be at a 4% or even higher in future years. But CPI is one of the biggest cost drivers. When CPI came down less than 1%, everybody's levies dropped significantly. So not knowing that and knowing what the economy is going to do is really what's going to swing our numbers significantly. So we anticipate with regard to the formula itself, consistency. Our property growth factor has remained pretty consistent. All those other pieces have been pretty stable. So it really depends on CPI and where that lands, which is going to drive the numbers fluctuating.
Carrie, in addition to CPI coming in a very healthy number this year, can you explain to the board and community what the largest driver is in seeing our flexibility in 4%, please?
So we had a significant amount of building aid fall off of our books. We had, building aid is a portion of that formula. So we take what our debt is, which is just over $2 million, subtract out the aid that we received to help pay for that debt, and then that number becomes an exclusion. You're obligated to pay your bonds, and you're obligated to pay that debt. So you can tax the taxpayers for that full amount. So that's why that gets added back into the formula. So by us losing about just $700,000, $700,000 in building aid, and we didn't lose it, it actually just fell off the payment schedule, it hit that 15-year mark of payments, and we still remain with some debt on the books at this point in time. So by taking, not reducing the debt by $800,000 increases our tax levy limit to pay for that debt essentially. Make sense?
Yes, since I went up the bond.
Yes.
Debt was forward?
Yes, that was correct. We advertise that to the community. That was part of the reason that we advertise that to the community, that the timing was right and correct financially speaking to incur new debt. That loss of aid is a tremendous loss to our base, which is why we have the flexibility to bolster it by going to the 4.2.
Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Always. Okay, now we go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, as Mrs. Lockland mentioned, we've spent a good deal of time speaking about issues regarding school security since the tragedy that took place in Florida on Valentine Day. It really has been an all-encompassing survey of what we should be doing as a district, what other districts are doing, what law enforcement is recommending. And it has been a very time-consuming, appropriately time-consuming review. So I think it's important tonight for the board to give the administration a bit of a charge. What we are bringing forward is recommendations for three items that we feel need to be done on an immediate basis, based upon the administrative review of our overall program, buildings, safety, and procedures. And then we have some more long-term questions that need to be answered, we need for the guidance from the board. We held a successful forum on safety last Monday. There were about 200 residents present. There were hundreds of residents who watched the livestream or the video of the safety forum. Many residents reached out to me prior to and following the forum, as I know many of you were contacted directly as well. We had several wonderful resources from the community, raised their hand to meet and to discuss their perspectives as law enforcement officers or school officials on things we should be looking at. And I have had the fortune, as has Mrs. Lockland, of attending various conferences since the 14th of February that speak to this specific topic. As I previously mentioned, I've spent time in Albany this weekend, and as you can imagine, there was a lot of folks focused on this topic throughout the state. There is a workshop tomorrow morning. There is a meeting at the Suffolk campus in Brentwood with law enforcement tomorrow, where school officials have been asked to attend. There is a forum on Monday night where I will be speaking and advocating for increases to school resource officers and resources for mental health on Monday night with the county executive, and that he asks us to come together. Everyone's focused on the topic. We are very much aware that we need to reexamine all of our procedures, all of our facilities, to make sure we're doing everything we can to protect our students' dignity and staff from any outside negative influences. So that said, I want to take the board through the three immediate recommendations from the administration that we would like to act on tomorrow morning. And with your authorization, we are primed to do that. Some of the other conversations we require are a bit more not on. The first of which is, when we examine the procedures we already have in place, we're fairly pleased with a lot of the systems that have happened in the last nearly 20 years since Columbine. Prior to Columbine, these conversations weren't occurring. There were no buzzers on doors, there were no surveillance cameras in hallways. They were likely weren't uniformed security guards in the campuses. But everything changed after Columbine. After Sandy Hook, things changed again. And I think after Parkland, it's time for things to change again in response to what I'm afraid is becoming immoral. That said, we feel that the most prudent action for the district to take is to harden our existing systems. So while some of these inconveniences are visible, give our students some additional tasks and our faculty some additional tasks, what we've charged the administration, the faculty, staff, and our students with is being vigilant, being responsive to rules that are in place, and putting in some just additional protocols to use the measures we already have to further secure our facilities. For example, all of you have visited our school buildings, you know you need to be buzzed in. However, it was typically, you ring the bell, you're buzzed in. Now, if you have visited one of our schools recently, you know you were asked who you are before you entered. You know you were asked if you have identification to verify that. And you know you were asked your purpose for coming into the building, all before you entered. And I think that was a simple change in practice, where scripts were prepared for our greeters. And I think it is a security enhancement that tightens and hardens the system we have. We have to be vigilant about not leaving doors open, making sure that our security guards are properly placed, and lots of other things that is about changing behavior, not changing our facility. So that's step one, and it's already in place. And I'm sure we have your blessing. Step two is when we examine our staffing and we look at how we have deployed our security forces, we believe that it is essential to have a security guard in place in the front entrance of our buildings at all times. Right now, we have security guards that occupy the entrances of our buildings, except when they're appropriately making their rounds in the facilities, checking the interior and the exterior for security flaws. A door that might have been left unlocked, a position that had been propped. Anything that, a bag that has been left unattended, what we ask them to do at least once an hour, they're leaving the front entrances to do, which for me is more exposure than I'm comfortable with. So we have spoken to Wisdom, who had, who supplies, is our contracted service that supplies with the guards. And our recommendation and what they can do for us immediately upon authorization from the board is to add to our security detail that will enable us to keep a security guard in the front of the building with the greeter at the desk to help surveil who is coming in and out of our facilities on a full-time basis, and then allowing the flexibility for the additional guards to continue to make rounds throughout the facilities and observe everything else that's going on in the building. We have to keep in mind that the primary role of all of our security guards is to protect the faculty and staff and students present within the building. While having security against an outside intruder is certainly part of their role, their primary role is to insulate those already in the building. Our security guards at the high school were initially put there to monitor the students, the behavior of the students, to make sure there are no physical altercations in the hallways, to make sure there are no illegal substances being brought into the building, and things of that nature. So we want them in the hallways, we want them in the cafeteria, we want them near the locker rooms and bathrooms. But we also feel it's important to have someone positioned in the main entrance at all times. So with the authority from the board, we have already contract, we have already contacted Wisdom and asked them the feasibility and availability of adding guards, one guard to each of our schools that would be assigned to the greeter's desk. We have money, the flexibility within the budget. We've had some unanticipated savings, as I referred to earlier, specifically some special ed expenses that were not realized that we could apply. And we're looking to enhance that immediately on Monday morning with your authorization. So there's no motion required. I am looking for agreement to move forward with that engine.
So what you're saying is that right now we have a guard at the front desk, but they leave the front desk in order to make these internal and external rounds, which takes about 15 minutes out of the hour?
Correct.
So about 25% of the time, they're not at the front desk?
At least 25% of the time.
Okay, so you want somebody to be at the front desk with the greeter the whole time? Is this just when students are in the building, correct? Just during school hours?
During operating hours, we want to increase the staffing. It's likely a shift that might look like an eight-to-four model. Just for clarity, in addition to the rounds at the elementary levels, the security guards are leaving the front doors for the entirety of recess because they're monitoring the stolen outside. So depending on the building, that exposure at the front desk does vary.
So that would mean, I know the high school has more guards, but the other schools would have at least two security guards the whole time that the students are within the building?
That is.
Okay, and they're all former law enforcement officers?
Our contract with Wisdom requires them to supply us with all former law enforcement officers. Our current staff varies from those who served on the NYPD, to those who were court officers, to those who were corrections officers. But they are all former law enforcement officers, and our contract requires that. I'm not sure, because of the high demand on Wisdom for additional staff, not only from our district but from other districts, whether those, that level of certification will be in place immediately. But it's required by contract that that is the guard that's placed there at the earliest available recruitment time.
And you feel because they're law enforcement folks that they would be more likely to be able to spot someone who who might be suspicious versus the greeter that's sitting at the desk?
That is exactly correct. And please keep in mind, when we talk about securing our facilities, we're not just focused on what may become an active shooter incident. We're talking about what could happen on a daily basis, a disgruntled parent with a custody issue, someone coming up who is unhappy with an interaction that took place, interactions between students in the building. These are the types of things we're referring to that unfortunately do happen routinely on school campuses. It's important that we're not just thinking a mindset of preparing our students for what, God forbid, would ever occur with an after shooter. We're talking about the day to day operations of a typical public school.
Are there any objections to that proposal? I think you are supporting that.
Email sent, okay. And we appreciate that support. If I heard the community clearly at the forum, I think one of the gaps that was noted was that while our greeters are lovely women, while they are polite, courteous, respectful and friendly, they don't have the training that these former law enforcement officers would have to defuse a situation or prevent the situation. Putting those resources in place, I think, will be to the great advantage of securing our facilities. So we thank you for your support, and we hope to have it in place as early as Monday morning. The other immediate action item is a bit more complicated to discuss, so let me try to lay it out as best I possibly can. There are security firms that contract with our BOCs to do audits of security systems in their entirety. We can pay a cooperative agreement with BOCs to contract with one of these agencies to come into Elver and look at all aspects of our operations, the buildings, our procedures, our infrastructure, our construction, and look for gaps in our security. And they would provide the district with a detailed report that would make recommendations of what we can do to further secure our facilities by practice, or by construction, or by staffing, entirely looking at everything from a 30,000 foot view to a micro view. They come and they perform their audit when school's in session, after hours, before hours, on weekends, in the buildings, outside the buildings. They interview staff, they interview students, they interview parents, they observe, they evaluate. The firm is made up of specialized law enforcement officers who work, collaborate with educators, who have a great experience in the school setting. The firm that is most reputable, that we identified through BOCs and contract already exists, is a group called Covert Investigations and Security. They perform dozens of audits like this throughout Long Island, throughout the state of New York, and the reviews of their work are extremely positive. They have no vested interest. They have nothing to gain. They do not sell any products or provide any staff following an audit. They make informed recommendations to the district of what they feel we should do following their visit. And the structure that I'm looking to do is to have the authority of the board to contract with Covert, bring them in to conduct this audit as soon as possible, and try to get to the head in line of districts looking for the service, have them provide that report to our enhanced safety committee that is chaired by Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Tomio, that many skilled residents volunteered to participate in, have them make their report to an informed committee, and then charge that committee with making detailed recommendations to the Board of Education on how to charge the administration when moving forward. So when you're asking how those additional monies might be spent, it would be wise to do some things that we think will certainly appear in the report, but hold off on others to see what the experts have to say. Questions?
So what comes to mind, I'm assuming this audit is belt to belt with the disturbing daily operations of the school. Are they going to also be looking at the safety measures of the school program or any co-creatures we're going to have? Is that something that's involved in this audit, or is it just a normal schedule?
Yes, I did provide the board with a proposal that we had them prepare proactively, which I know you have not had the opportunity to review. But one of the things that they illustrate very clearly is they observe all aspects of our organization. And that includes evenings and weekends when outside groups are here. And includes in the middle of the night. They do a full and extensive audit of all aspects of our district.
And in addition, I know you mentioned about the security coming, having two security guards at school, just so you feel reminded. Do you also want to have security after school coming in spring?
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan made a recommendation as our director of athletics that he felt when we have teams outside practicing in the spring that we do, that having a minimum of two roaming security guards to enhance our yellow jacket supervisors would make it an appropriate and more safe condition for our student athletes. So forgive me, we have already authorized that addition.
Yeah, I thought you were going to say the other.
It wasn't adding staff, it was adding hours to existing staff. So we took action to do that. And as soon as our spring courts begin, there will be security monitoring activated. And thank you for reminding me.
I just want to assess that the reason going through BOCs is because they've already been sort of vetted, and it eliminates a whole process which, in the constraint of time, allows us to move forward without having to do the whole RFP process.
You're correct on two levels. A, it speeds up the process of getting here because we have an existing cooperative services agreement with BOCs, and they can add this service to it, and we have the funding available to do so. And I haven't gotten to that part yet. If we had to do an RFP, it would be a lengthy procedure. It would take a good deal of time, and we'd likely end up with the same organization because of how reputable they are. But BOCs bears all of that portion of the administrative function. And they do charge an administrative fee for that. But all of that work has been done, and we would likely be able to have them on campus very soon in order to begin this. It is an extensive process for them to perform the audit as wide range as it is. But the other advantage to contracting through BOCs is it becomes adable work. There is a percentage of the funds that would be returned to the district because the state always encourages districts from entering into collaborative agreements with the BOCs. We are financially incentivized to do that. Once you read this proposal of how expensive their evaluation is, the part that I think will surprise you the most is the cost. I think just based upon what I've shared with you in the community, you're probably assuming this is tens of thousands of dollars in expense. Their charge for this service is an adable $4,000. BOCs tax on about $2,000 administrative fee for all the work they've done and would continue to do to assist and support the unit. So the total cost to the district would be $6,000 minus the aid that is returned to the district for using the cooperative service. So to, again, budget at the high end, this would be an approximate $6,000 expense to the district. And I think the value that we would get from it and the expertise that they bring makes this, for me, a no brainer. And then to use the internal resources we have, who volunteered from our community, to read and digest and make an informed opinion about the report makes this an absolute home run.
Okay, and that's my second question slash concern. Most of our board committees, as everybody knows, there are open committees and anybody can attend. And I think when we go into the arena of security and we're talking about this enhanced security committee, I just want you to elaborate a little bit on that so that, because it will not be, because of the confidentiality, obviously, and the nature of this report, we don't want anybody, do we?
Board committees by regulation are open to the public.
Right, so yeah, so then my question now becomes, this report, will it be viewed before the safety committee?
The board, the report is prepared for the administration, the Board of Education. The administration would be charged with redacting any information that we felt would be a security exposure to the district.
Okay, so it would not be shared with the safety committee?
Not in its entirety. I'm certain their report, if this report should, God forbid, expose some grand flaw in our plan, we would certainly not publicize it.
Okay.
I think that the vision that Mr. Tomio and I have for next safety discussions about all these security concerns, and something that you highlighted to Dr. Brussard, is that we would take this report from Covert, we hire Covert, and we would actively ask for community members that we have a breadth of, that are security experts, police officers, former police officers, to come and help us vet the document.
And interview those who completed the report.
Yes.
They're not going to hand us a binder and walk away. They're going to sit and review it until the board is satisfied that all questions regarding the report have been answered. So to have some informed members of the community assisting the board in the administration with asking the right question is important.
Right, it's a all hands on deck for all those that are capable in this regard.
Correct. And I will tell you, I know that community members also reach out directly to board members, but I have been personally contacted by three members of the community. I've forwarded their contact information to the chairs of the safety committee, but retired law enforcement, retired law enforcement, an active agent in the Department of Homeland Security. Pretty good resources.
Well, I think time is of the essence, so I fully support this, especially with the small costs associated with it. I would hate to see us go into something, spending good money after bad. At least we'll have a professional telling us, guiding us.
I have had the opportunity to have some conversations with folks who have experienced this type of audit and had some deep conversations about specific items. And I can tell you, there were some questions and recommendations made by the community and made by our faculty that Covert will say should not be pursued. But they will have lengthy rationale for why. For me to say to the community, we don't feel metal detectors are an effective deterrent, I'm an educator. If Covert, as an example, says this is why we are not recommending metal detectors being installed and has two pages of data to support it, that's a more reasonable presentation for our community.
And in their audit, they would cover both the day to day type security issues that you mentioned, custodial, students, whatever, and also the emergency deterrence and responses?
Correct. And I think that when we look at, I'm sorry to bring it back to the budget again, when we look at talking to the community about how those additional funds might be spent, I think there are some assumptions of what would appear in the report based upon our own skill set knowledge, i.e. vestibules, being added to our buildings that we would anticipate appearing in the report. So if we're going to ask the community to support an increase greater than 2.5%, and tell them it's for security enhancements, I'm a community member and I want some sense of what that's going to be. So I would likely feel very, not likely, I would feel very comfortable expressing to the community the careful thought and attention we would be giving to security vestibules, some targeted staffing, both security and mental health, and then tell them that there are other items that we would ask to be evaluated through Covert.
I think one thing that I like about doing this audit, the security audit, it's kind of what Mrs. Malito said, and I mentioned it in the hallway also. You know, I think that this is an emotional issue, obviously. But I also think that we have to be good stewards of the school and the tax dollar. And we cannot get wrapped up in throwing money at things that may not actually be really effective. So I know that's part of Mr. Tomio and my desire to have really capable people join us on the safety committee so that we can all hash out through experts what is truly the best deterrent, what is truly the best response, what is truly the best prevention, and then we can head down that road. So I'm all for getting experts on board through this Covert security audit.
I'm sorry, Becky, I'll remind the board, we already have a very similar system in place. Each year with our financials, we have our internal orders review our financials, we have our external orders review our financials. But then we bring together the audit committee, which is chaired by board members and with subject matter experts from the community who help to read and decipher the report prepared by the auditor. This is doing the very same thing, but instead of focusing on finances, we're focused on security.
So I don't really have anything to add because my colleagues did such a great job and answered all the questions that I had and also reiterated some of the comments that I would have had. It sounds like we're all in full support of doing this. One question that I do have is we're looking to take a look at the money spent on a tax cap. And how long would it take this company to come up with recommendations? Would this be after the budget process, before the budget process? How, what's the estimated time that this takes?
I understand your question, and I certainly think we would have the report prior to the end of the school year. I'm not sure we would have any time to set the tax rate in April. But what I can tell you is with the work that we are doing with our architects and our new construction manager, if we are in agreement that vestibules at the entrances of each of our schools is something we believe should be included to enhance our security, that will exhaust the largest majority of the flexibility we're looking for financially. So if we're asking the community to approach 4.2% with the idea of security enhancements in mind, I think we should feel comfortable in advertising that as security vestibules to be constructed in each of our buildings and to enhance our staffing in the areas of mental health and security.
And so perhaps we could ask Covert to look at that portion of things first. Does this make sense?
I don't want to speak to Covert because I'm not a security expert, but I feel very comfortable telling the board that they will support the addition of security vestibules in the vote.
I'm assuming they will.
I am basing this upon reports I have read today prepared for other districts.
I also think it would be something that we should add to remind the community that when we voted on the bond, we voted on specific things that we'd be using the bond money for. So we cannot say, well, we just passed the bond, so let's do the vestibules with the bond money. We cannot do that. So when I was looking, when I was hearing the security forum, I did think about taking the budget that we have that cap up to 4% and maybe we do take some of that monies towards security. Since we could do that, we could afford that this year. We would not need to go out for another capital bond about it. I do think it's an interesting idea. I do think people should really consider it. And just know that the bond money cannot be used for it.
And you are correct. We cannot bait and switch the community. We advertised the bond very specifically in a scope of work. The law does not provide any flexibility to have the community approve one project and the board to authorize another. And I think that's good language within regulation. So this is alternate funding sources that can be applied to security enhancements.
So it sounds like you've got full support here.
Okay, so we will contract with Covert. So that said, my recommendation to the board is that some of the other items mentioned at the security forum, such items as arming security guards, installing metal detectors, adding bulletproof or resistant glass, entry gates in our parking lots, removing senior privilege. And I think some of those items that were discussed should wait until we have an opinion from the experts of what is worthwhile and what should not be pursued.
And I said one thing, I don't know if Covert looks at this, but I know something that I do, something that I've been members about is the emergency preparedness. Do they even look at?
I'm pretty confident, as I told you, that the first document they will request from me is the overall school safety plan.
How about our response to how that is?
I'm not sure of your question.
God forbid something was to happen.
Oh, you mean our drills?
No, the CEP, being prepared to tie Charlie kids and take care of the students, not the students themselves. I think that's been a question that's come up. As we do a plan to that, is our teacher certified to do that?
Yeah, I'm not waiting for Covert on that one because they think it's an item of urgency. So we just discussed today with the leadership team that we need to identify a few unfortunate trainings that we'll be sending members of the leadership team and instructional staff to be trained, stop believe being one of them, and then bringing that information back to each of the building faculties and staff. That's as part of staff development during faculty meetings and super tense conference days. And as said, as that reality is, I am in agreement with that assessment.
Any other comments regarding this?
We have our charge. We appreciate your support, and we'll make things happen expeditiously.
Okay, we are up to second resident remarks. The board encourages all residents to attend its meeting. And in this section of the agenda, for some opportunity to speak, persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comment should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Though discussion of matters relating to staff, students or others at which they have reputation, privacy or right to do process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Anyone for resident? Anyone for resident remarks?
No.
No? Seeing none, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Marcus, I've been by Mrs. Weiss, all on faith. All right, see you all. Thank you, everyone, keep watching from home. Thank you for your attendance.